I'm Transportation, is calling this public hearing to order. It's 10:00 AM, Thursday, October 23, 2014. Senator Ada just called and unfortunately he can't be here yet to take care of something. So as his vice chair, you know, I'm happy to be here to be able to preside over this hearing and as Senator Ada always wishes that this public hearing continue so that the legislative process can continue on the matter of Bill 408-32COR introduced by Senator Rodriguez and by Senator Tom Ada. I'd like to introduce and thank colleagues for being here, Senator Michael Snitlitz to my right and Senator Dennis Rodriguez to my left. So Bill 408-32 introduced by both Senators Rodriguez and Tom Ada is an act to provide for development and implementation of comparable rate schedule R charges for residential multifamily accommodations by the Guam Power Authority by adding a new item one to subsection 8104D of chapter 8 title 12 GCA and a new item one to subsection 3111 of article 1, chapter 3 title 28 Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations. Notice of this public hearing was provided to senators, to stakeholders, to the local media on October 16, 2014 with the five day notice requirement and on October 21, 2014 for the 48 hour public notice requirement. Thus this meeting, this meets the requirements of the open government law. The public hearing is also being broadcast on local television, so for those testifying, we remind you to please speak clearly into the microphone. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 5:00 PM Friday, October 31st. So please address your testimony to Senator Thomas Ciata, Chairperson of the Committee on Public Safety, Infrastructure, and Maritime Transportation. So at this time, I'd like to give the sponsor of this bill, Senator Rodriguez, an opportunity to provide for an overview and then we have three individuals that signed up to testify. So Senator Rodriguez?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you very much to my colleagues who are here and to the public. Bill 408-32 is introduced by myself and Senator Tom Ada. It's an act to provide for development and implementation of comparable rate schedule R charges for residential multifamily accommodations by amending certain statutes in our Guam code annotated. But really, this issue came up about maybe two months ago at the Guam Association of Realtors Forum. And so, you know, from that time that it was brought up, we, our office looked into this matter and we discovered that this is a 13 year old issue. This spans, goes back 13 years when Mr. Chris Felix had approached GPA to discuss this, you know, I call an equality that is being extended to residents who are living in condominiums or apartments, being charged commercial rates when really they're using these units as residential rates. And so there was conflicting responses that I've saw in the packet in the history of the 13 years. One was that GPA had come forward and said that, no, it doesn't matter what type of meter you have there, if you're a residential customer, you use as a residential, you'll be charged residential. And then it kind of changed and said, okay, we went out there, sent engineers out there, take a look at it. And they said, okay, you need to rewire this whole building. And that's a, that's a big task that I think shouldn't be brought upon, upon the owners. And so we moved this measure forward. I was hoping that members of GPA or the CCU would be here. We reached out to them before introducing this measure and provided them a copy of it. And so I know that the committee chair, Senator Ada, would, reaching out to them as well before this comes out to the floor. But I think this starts a discussion and really makes it official now that this is something serious, that's something we must address because 13 years of this just lingering out there, it's something that shouldn't be happening. And so we want to just move this forward. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Rodriguez. I'd like to invite up the three gentlemen that signed up to testify. Just have all, oh, no, three. We'll just go in the order of you signing up. So Mr. Felix and then we'll just go.
I'm Christopher Felix. I'm the president of the committee. One of our, one of my comments being managed as large associations, we're coming as a more than by different associations and organizations. About 15 years ago, we began to realize that the larger-
Build, I'm sorry, that the larger buildings on Guam, basically the ones with backup generators and the way it was used to be wired and configured, that these buildings were being built, billed in commercial rates. So we went, met with GPA, we started the fight. John Beneventi at that time was general manager and he's my parry and a good friend and a fishing buddy. And one day we're out fishing and I'm saying, we gotta do something. And he totally agreed. It's unfair. And we met, we've met with all the departments, as the senators said, this thing went on and on for years. And every time we get through one department, another one would come up with a reason why the regulations won't allow it. So then I tried the CUC, met with Simon and the gang over there and, and they, again, they all agreed, this is a right thing, it's a fair thing, but they realized that CUC, it's not their division on how to, you know, it was more of a meters situation it got down to. So finally, the only thing was the legislature and I was working with Senator Pangolinan before he passed away and he was going to work with us on it. And that's basically a very brief history. Not only is this fair, I think it's more than fair because most of these buildings have sub-meters. And we read those sub-meters and bill each homeowner out of GPA. So not only is it fair, but we're saving GPA reading thousands of meters because we do that. And, and it will continue to do it. All we want them to do is read that main meter and bill us residential rates so that I can charge these people who are living the residential rates. So we're actually saving a lot of effort and time on GPA's part because everything from the main meter in is our responsibility. So if a meter breaks or something, we gotta take care of it and as these sub-meters. So that's part of our service to the association. So we read probably about eight, nine hundred meters a month and bill each homeowner, collect it and send GPA one big check. And so it's actually a cheaper thing for them, I would think. There was some questions raised about the demand meters because larger meters have this demand charge that adds in. There's a letter from electrical engineer Vic Rages presented to you that says, no, that can't be converted easily to residential. So thank you for your time. All we're asking is to be fair. It may take a slight adjustment of the other residential rates, a very minute adjustment up to make it all fair because they can't collect less, you know, they've got to collect something. But I'm, that's just a minor, I would think, a fraction of a penny a kilowatt hour.
Okay, thank you. And so something's up, your testimony is in full support of Senator Rodriguez's bill?
Yes.
Okay.
Scott Campbell, also I'm president of the Coral Sea Realty, but also board director of the Guam Association of Realtors. And in regards to the Guam Association of Realtors, they are in favor of this bill because again, they, there are a number of people and companies that are with our association have voiced their support for this bill. And also in agreement with Chris that we do manage a number of condominiums also that have one master meter and it just doesn't seem logical to be able to have to bill them commercial rate for the whole residential building. That's, that's basically all I have right now.
Okay, thank you.
Morning Senators, my name is Clayton Duval. I manage the Lupancove condominium and I've had that job, well, twice. So I've got in 23 years of managing that complex. It was the first condominium built in Guam. We've got one meter, no sub-meters, it's not wired for it. We've had a lot of contentious debate over, well, why don't we, you know, put in individual meters and then, you know, put in split units for people's apartments so we can save on power if we're not there. Problem is the way the billing was constructed. It's more efficient for us to operate a chilled water plant. So that's what we have. Based on the power rates from 1986, I use 36% less power now than I did in 1986. And that's because we use, we use more efficient equipment, we've taken a lot of measures to lower the demand side of things. And in fact, in my written testimony, I've provided you with some, three different buildings. And we actually get a credit because our power factor, we have a power factor of about 96. That's, that's pretty efficient. You can't get much more efficient than that. So we get a credit back from that. But, you know, we're also, we're being billed under the P rate schedule. GPA's argument is that, well, we have, you know, you have a certain amount of demand, we have to be able to supply you with that demand at any time, you know, based on your history. And so, you know, we're going to charge you for the pleasure of that. But, you know, after 40, what have you been there, we've been there 41 years, we're actually more efficient, our demand is pretty stable. So we're being penalized. It's a residential condominium, the most contentious argument I have every year, just like you guys when you do your budgets, I have a small city there that I have to budget for. Now I have to worry, you know, about what are they doing in the Middle East? What's, what's GPA going to do with scrubbers or LNG? What factors going to come in that all affect my power? I have to set my, my common area fees for an entire year based on, you know, my extrapolation and anticipation from October of this year, I'm setting all my rates for next year. Now, of course, I could always change the common area fees, but if I raise them 2%, you know, it's, you know, I gotta, you know, I gotta wear a flak jacket to some of these meetings because, you know, it's shoot the messenger time. And, you know, any amount of savings that, that we can get through this measure that Senator Ada and Senator Rodriguez have introduced, you know, I think it's, I think it's only fair. Chris pointed out that, you know, it's, if you're living in a residence, you should be afforded a residential rate. GPA's rate structure, if you re-thrall his rates, it's very convoluted. I mean, the ordinary person and probably even some engineers, you know, would have some trouble with it. But there's a way to make it easier and this, this seems like, you know, a good measure that, that would do that. Yeah, in, in the power bills that I gave you, one thing I noticed is the president of our board of directors, Roger Craftan, he's got a house up in Mighty in the Calvo compound, he's paying 41 cents a kilowatt hour. He's got three phase power, so it's, it's because of that essentially, but if anybody would be a little annoyed by the fact that, you know, he's paying, he's paying far more than we are and, but even far more than the typical resident. So I think this is a good measure, deserves, you know, it deserves clarifying. Obviously, you know, I did expect Simon Sanchez or somebody from GPA to be here to, to argue the points that they've got, you know, bonding and they've got the feds and they have, you know, revenue loss that they have to be concerned with. But at the end of the day, it's a pocketbook of the consumer and, you know, despite the fact that Lupancove sits on the beach, you know, we have a nice view, people there, you know, they're not, you know, we got an ordinary, you know, teachers and, and, you know, residents that live there that they watch every penny. And the one factor that, that does annoy people a lot is that the common area fee stays what it is every month regardless. So whether you use your power or not, whether you have a tenant in your, in your apartment or not, you still have to pay that common area fee. So, you know, we're a bit of an anomaly, but again, you know, we're a residential structure and I think affording, you know, structures of the type that, that I manage, you know, our residential rate, I think that's just a fair thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Let me recognize Senator Snitlitz for some follow-up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I fully support the intent of us moving this forward for parity and fairness for all residential consumers. My only concern is I want to make sure it actually gets to the residential consumer and you kind of touched on that, sir, about how I understand that there are certain arrangements where power is already included in the rent. And so when the, if we were to go to a residential billing structure for, like for example, a condominium that already includes power and water in the, in the rent or the common area fee or what have you, are we, are those consumers going to then see a reduction in those flat fees?
Well, yeah, I mean, I- Can you turn on the microphone?
Yeah, obviously if, if I can reduce my, my overall, you know, I have $800,000 power bill, so if I can keep from raising my common area fees, now we have, you know, we have water increases that we had to budget for, but the one contentious thing that I have to deal with every year is power. And, and I have, you know, sometimes we hit it right on the money, sometimes we're, you know, a little under budget, but most of the time at the end of the year, you know, and then I have to sit there and roll the dice and figure out, okay, what's, what's going to happen with GPA, the Middle East, you know, how, how are the power rates going to be affected by the fuel costs? Because that, that fuel adjustment portion is a, a big number. And it's, you know, the LEAC is every six months, so, you know, right now oil prices are down, but that doesn't guarantee me that, that, you know, three months from now I'm going to, I'm going to get the benefit of that. So yes, the objective is to keep the common area fees down and if, if I, you know, if I get a 3% to 5% reduction in my power bill, yeah, I can, I can, you know, I can keep them down.
Okay, because for me, I just want to make sure that, you know, what we're doing is we're passing this all the way through to the consumer because that's who we're looking out for in terms of the fairness and parity.
In response to that, Alapang- Can you turn on the microphone?
In response to that, Alapang is one of the few that do not have sub-meters. There's 6, 800 units that do. And, and, and these are billed, so they would be directly to the residence, they're billed every month. So it's, it's, it's direct savings and it's a good question. Virtually all the rest of the units have sub-meters.
Right, Scott?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, okay, thank you for your participation. I see Mr. Joey Duennias CCU Commissioner signed up to testify. So the committee recognizes you at this time.
Good morning Senators, my name is Joey Duennias. I'm a member of the elected CCU and I'm here to provide oral testimony. Actually, I brought the general manager of GPA's written testimony down for you folks and I'd be willing to answer any questions you have.
Would you like to read this letter into the record, just for those following along on TV or?
Sure, it's his letter though, but just as long as that's understood. It's signed by John Beneventi.
Okay.
Okay, he's the interim general manager. Basically, Dear Senator Ada and other senators, thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Guam legislative bill number 408-32. The problems raised by multifamily complex with a single master meter has come up at the Guam Power Authority every few years. These buildings are on Guam where apartments or condominiums are behind a master meter. There are also buildings where apartments or condominiums are individually metered and billed separately. In the first instance, the homeowners association or its designee is the GPA customer and account holder of the master meter. In the second instance, the GPA customer of record is the person authorized to occupy the apartment or condominium and is the account holder of the residential meter. A significant impact of metering customers based on a master meter is that their consumption is billed at a commercial customer tariff rather than the residential tariff. As a public utility that exists to provide service to ratepayers, everything we do relies on the accuracy of data we utilize. Every time we have an adjustment in rates, we complete a cost of service study to allocate GPA's cost across all customer classes. And it's very important that GPA be as accurate as we can when we assign these costs. In order to make sure that the costs are allocated as accurately as possible, we need to have proper metering in place. The principle of one meter for one customer is at the heart of everything we do. Bill 408-32 is not consistent with GPA's requirement to allocate costs as accurately as possible. The bill also assumes a level of uniformity among un-metered apartments and condominiums. We believe there is great diversity in the usage of apartments. Some people are in their units most of the day, some people are in them only at night, some people are only in their units part of the year. We are concerned about estimating costs to customers based on an assumption of uniformity. Currently GPA enters into a contract with each customer for the delivery of service through a single meter and GPA can take specific actions if a customer does not fulfill his obligations. This is the way utilities have always operated. It is for these reasons that we oppose Bill 408-32. The bill seeks to address a valid problem, but the solutions are complex. We are willing to continue working with homeowners, the Guam Public Utilities Commission, to work on an equitable solution for all. Sincerely, John Beneventi.
So the record of Senator is clear that this is the general manager's-
Yes, this is general manager. Now I'm willing to answer any questions, pardon?
Now I want to provide you an opportunity to present any oral testimony.
Well, basically, the general manager's giving you the technical view. The policy view is really follows along with it, which is, which says that each ratepayer has to be assured that he's only paying for the power he consumes. And that can only be done through proper metering. Without having a proper meter, then, then you get into an area where you can't assure that the ratepayer is paying exactly what he wants, needs to pay. And therein is the problem. In reading the bill, we believe it says to set up some sort of an estimating regimen and we can't do that. In fact, the law doesn't allow GPA to estimate bills.
Maybe the sponsor wants to clarify, Senator.
Sure.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you very much. You know, earlier there was testimony provided from one of the individuals here, Mr. Felix, that discussed how most of the building, only one had had testified that one building had a master meter and didn't have sub-meters. Most of the units, and this is a 13 year, at least from what I've looked at, a 13 year old problem, right? And nothing has happened since then. And so in the buildings that we understand have master meters, then have sub-meters for every other unit in the building. So, you know, what we're saying there is that why can't GPA charge them a residential rate? They have a master meter, they go to, you know, they, they go to your unit, read it X kilowatt hours times whatever the rate is. That rate needs to be a residential rate instead of a commercial rate that they're being charged. And so this is, and this is what it sets up to do.
On a building where the building is properly wired for individual meters, then we will just install a meter. You don't need sub-meters. See, sub-meters come along where you say, here's the master meter and then these are all the other different meters. And we don't control those meters. We don't know that, we don't calibrate them, we don't know their accuracy. We have no control over those meters. Some, by the way, Senator, just to clarify, some buildings on Guam have gone through the trouble of rewiring their buildings and have actually come to us and put in meters, separate meters. In fact, one building that I know of is what you call a mixed-use building. It's residential and commercial. It's called the Derre Towers. And they, they started out with a master meter. And those are condominiums. So they, they came along and they said, okay, we're going, we want to put in a separate meter. So you have to wire the building properly and then we will put in meters. We started to install residential meters for those units. The new owner of that building came along and took all the meters out and said, I want to go back to just the master meter. That building has gone full circle. If any of these buildings want to come out and get their buildings, you know, electrically changed, or, you know, I'm not an engineer, but to provide us the opportunity to give each unit a meter, then that's not a problem.
Yeah, you know, it's, over the 13 years of history that we've taken a look at, there were conflicting, and I mentioned this earlier in my, in my opening remarks, there were conflicting statements from GPA. One was just that, that you have to come in and if you want to do this, you have to rewire your building. The other was a statement from GP that said, no, it doesn't matter if you have a master meter, if you are a residential and you have these sub-meters, then you should be charged that, right? And so I understand from the, I know it's not your written testimony, but from the GPA interim manager, he says that, you know, these are, this is a valid problem and that solutions are being looked at, but I haven't seen any, there's really nothing over the last, at least 13 years, that has moved this forward and so-
But there is one case that I just told you about, the Derre Towers, where they actually rewired the building and we did put in residential meters.
But you said they went back to-
Well, the new owner came out and he's turning it back to a hotel with commercial uses. See, the first floor is commercial, there, you know, there's a restaurant and some other things, gift shop, whatever. And then there's even a karaoke lounge, I think. And then the second, the upper floors were all condos. But from what we, we've learned is that they came back and they said, take out the residential meters, we just want to go back to master meter. And I think they're operating that as a hotel. I'm really not sure, it's not our business to know what they want to do with their property, but, but I'm not aware. They just recently renovated the old Tropicana Hotel and I don't think they went to separate meters, I'm not sure. No, they're still on a master meter. And when they did the renovation, they had the opportunity to go and say, we want to individually meter them and they didn't. They, you know, every building owner is different and I have a condo not on Guam, but I have a condo and my condo separately metered for power. And some of these buildings are separately metered for power, some of them are just one meter for water, for example. It depends on the time when they were built and the, and what the building owners wanted.
I think that's, that's, that's where I see the problem, is that some of these old buildings are old buildings already. People are living there. I think it's very unreasonable to go there now and say, okay, you've been there for 20 years, now you must get your owner to rewire the whole building just to be able to get a residential. And so, you know, that's something that for me seems unreasonable. And there's got to be a way, there's got to be, I mean, there's got to be a way.
Senator, the only thing, see, is if you, if you don't rewire the building so that we can have the principle that is expressed in the letter, one customer, one meter, where we can accurately reflect to the customer, this is your consumption and this is why your bill is this, then we can't treat our customers fairly.
So these, so these sub-meters, you don't have confidence, I mean, they're, they're not accurate?
Well, no, the, the sub-meters, one, they're not our sub-meters. They're not ours. They don't belong to us, we don't touch them.
Sure, but, but there's no way to, to, to make it work because the sub-meters are there.
That's what I'm saying, Senator, it's real simple. If the building is wired and we put in our meter, you know, then we know exactly what is going on, we can accurately bill that resident. You know, here's the problem, let's say that with the, with the building that has sub-meters, let's say one tenant says, hey, I think my meter's wrong. I think it's measuring too high. I think my, my, my usage is lower than that. I just bought a new refrigerator, the SER rating is higher. So I want that meter checked. Who's going to check the meter? Who's going to make adjustments?
Want to be the homeowner, the same people now that are billing that?
No, right now, right now, if a homeowner comes to us and says, I believe my meter is not accurately reflecting my costs, my usage and therefore what I need to pay, then GPA takes the meter out and calibrates it and comes back and says, no, it's accurate or you're right, that's wrong. One of the things I found out when we went, when we moved to smart meters and we're all on smart meters now, except for about 26 people who were waiting to do the opt-out with and put the new smart meter that doesn't have the radio frequency, one of my experiences was, I had a person in Agania Heights who kept coming after me and saying, you know, I, I don't use this much power. Well, guess what? We found out that those old legacy meters, for the most part, they were not accurate and, and GPA was winning. Except in a few cases where the customer was winning. I mean, most of the cases, the customer's winning. There are a few cases like this individual residential customer in Agania Heights where when we put in the smart meter, we said, you're right, you're not using that much. And that's why metering is very important. Calibration of those metering, keeping up with them, you know, I mean-
I agree. But the thing is that, is this, is that you have one condominium has a master meter, I'm sure that happens now with a sub-metering. They go to Chris Felix or they go to Mr. Campbell and say, look, I, I think I use less than this. That's between the two of them.
No, it's between us.
No, it's not because-
If we're going to give them a bill, it becomes GPA.
No, it's not, but, but GP doesn't give them a bill. It's, it's the homeowners that give that, give you as a home, as a unit a bill and says, this is what you use for this month.
Right.
So that, so that happens now.
The homeowners association is the one that allocates the bill out.
That's right. And so that already happens now, so why can't GPA just, you know, you, you read it and it's, it's a-
No, see, we don't read it, that's exactly what you said.
No, no, you read the master meter, they read the sub-meters.
They read the sub-meters.
So why can't that just, you know, charge them that residential rate?
Again, again, it goes back to accuracy. Again, again, it goes back to accuracy. We don't know what those meters are. We don't know how often they're counted.
No, but you read the sub-meter.
No, we don't.
I mean, you, you, sorry, you read the master meter.
That's right.
So you say, this building, X amount of kilowatts, right? And so, you're, you're already billing them, and all they're saying is, why don't you bill them the resident, not each unit, bill that one building?
I understand, I understand.
Let's try, let's try this approach. It's, I think it's very simple.
Can I just, okay, go ahead.
Wait, just give me a second. Whatever the current regime is now, whatever the current system is now, the sponsor of the legislation is saying it's going to be the same thing, just change the formula from commercial to residential. Whatever the current setup is now...
No, you can't do that, Senator, because some parts of it will still be commercial. For example, the common area, the pool.
And that's what the bill...
Yeah, I know, I'm getting to that. So, so some parts of it will be common area, and then you're saying, just spread the rest of them in the residential. Now, the problem comes in, what happens if those meters are not working properly or whatever? It can't be a simple thing of, these are what the sub-meter say for the residences, so therefore, by default, whatever is encountered here has to be the common area.
But I, I believe they also have a sub-meter for common area usage.
Okay, so what happens if the common area and the sub-meters are not in sync? Well, that's, that's the point. Each one, each customer, if we're going to send out a bill to, to Senator San Nicholas in Unit 101, and send out a bill to Senator Rory Raspishon, Bill 2, in Apartment 201, then we have to make sure that that is accurate, an accurate bill. And if the meters are not working properly, we have no control over that. So Senator San Nicholas will say, well, but you know, I, I think you're wrong. And we will have no way to know.
Let me invite Mr. Felix back up to the table, because I think this, this dialogue is very productive. This is very productive.
Chris is very excited, because I'm sorry.
Which, no problem.
I really think this whole letter misunderstands the intent. We're not asking you to bill individual owners. We're not asking you to read the sub-meters. We're asking you to read the master meter as you do now.
And change the formula.
And just change the formula to bill that kilowatt. The, the part about common area, that's not fair. Because the building has a pool, my house has a pool. I pay residential rate, my house has a swimming pool. These 100 homeowners are sharing in a swimming pool in the hallways and whatever, that's all residential. They're living there, they're using the pool. Are you telling me that when you read my house meter, you should split and bill commercial for the swimming pool? No, I'm a resident. And this whole letter says, how can you judge the use during the day? You do it now. We're not asking for any change. What, whatever usage we use now, we're going to use tomorrow. It's the same. Just read the master meter and send us a bill for that usage, 400,000 kilowatt-hours times whatever the residential rate is. That's all we're asking.
And, maybe the pool is not a good example, but in a, in a condominium such as the Lupin Cove, you have elevators that run on motors. You don't have that in an ordinary house.
But you, you could, you could, Joey, come on.
No, I understand that.
There are houses in Hawaii that have elevators. When I get old, I've designed my house to take one of those lifts that go up the stairs, which is similar to, you're telling me that part is not rent? There are 200 and some units there.
And again, we're saying that the, that the, that the way utilities have always operated is one customer, one meter, one bill. And, and we don't control the sub-meters. If, if we can put in a meter at each unit, then that's what we do. And that will generate a host of other bills. It won't, you can't give one bill to the homeowners association and, and just say, this is the residential part and this is the commercial.
Well, it seems like this is limited to a policy decision of the Guam Power Authority. You haven't yet argued that this is against the bond covenant or, or anything else other than...
Well, everything, everything goes to the bond covenant, Senator, because our bonds are all revenue pledged. And the whole basis is that we have to collect revenue. And in order to collect revenue, we must accurately bill our customers.
I am, I am your customer, and you are accurately billing me.
Yes, on one master meter.
Right.
Yeah.
So just bill me the residential rate.
I guess the bill is saying that you're inaccurately billing a residential customer a commercial rate when it should be a residential rate.
No, no, Senator, because the characteristics of the way the building is built is as a building that requires three-phase power, requires a whole bunch of other things, and therefore, you know, that's why we, we do what we do. This is not, listen, we haven't started and said, we're going to do something different from the rest of the industry. This follows what the industry does. The industry doesn't do that anywhere else.
Okay, let's hear from another CCU Commissioner, Mr. Haran. I believe Senator Stettles has a question.
I think probably the question here is, it's pretty much clear what the, the intent of the bill, and even though we support it, I think the issue here of, like, all of these complexes, like condominiums and, you know, apartment, is the nature of these condominiums, they are in business to make money, right? By leasing out, renting and everything, right? So if they are in the business of making money, then we cannot give them residential rate, because they are, they are not in business, I mean, they are not residential, they are in business. So that's why they have to be now the tenants. We will gladly give every tenant in any apartment condominium, provide it, that they are individually metered by Guam Power, where we have total control of those meters, and we can, we are, then we'll be responsible that every penny that they pay us is accurately reflected on the meter that they consume, okay? And so, that is really the crux of the thing, is that we cannot charge residential on a master meter to a business complex. That, that defies the law.
I've made their positions very clear, and I don't want to keep going back and forth. I want to give Senator Stettles an opportunity.
Well, I'd just like to make one statement. We are willing to work with people. We, you know, if, if they want to sit down with us, this bill came out of nowhere to us, was introduced...
No, and before you came, Senator Rodriguez said that they're continuing to reach out to GPA, and they've invited GPA here. This is not the end all.
Yeah, yeah, we'll be glad to sit down with all the parties to continue to work. I'm not saying we're not going to work with anybody, we're willing to work, but we follow the industry. Anyway, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I, I think what, what this comes back down to is the spirit of, of why we have a residential rate. And that is so that our residents, you know, they're able to afford turning the lights on and the kids doing the homework, having a hot shower, you know, that's the whole reason why we have the residential rate. And some of our people are in the position where they can't afford to own their own home. They have to rent. And when they rent, sometimes they can rent a single-family dwelling, oftentimes, they can find an even better deal in an apartment complex or in a, in a duplex. And, you know, duplexes, fourplexes, those are all considered R2-zoned. But if, once you get into something that has more than four units, all of a sudden, now you're staying in a commercially zoned property. And so, when you're staying in a commercially zoned property, chances are you're, you're still paying a lower rent, maybe. You could have, you could rent an apartment for $800 in an apartment building. But unfortunately, those, those people, because of the current system that we have set up, are paying commercial power rates. And that's where this whole bill comes from, is we're trying to address the fact that residents should all be fairly paying a residential rate. Now, what GPA or the utilities representatives are testifying to is that because of the way the building's wired, and because of the way the, the utility bills are administered, you cannot go and charge this residential rate. And I think that the intent of the legislation is to try and find that middle ground that will allow GPA to be able to assess that residential rate to the residents, because that's, that's what everybody understands to be fair, whether it's the Realtors Association or whether it's the Power Authority or the Senators, a residential rate is a residential rate. And so, if you're going to require entire units to rewire, that's going to be putting the burden again on the resident. Because if I'm going to pay, just logically speaking, if I'm the owner of a 50-unit apartment building and I got to pay hundreds of thousands or tens of thousands of dollars to rewire it, I'm going to have to pass that through to the resident and charge them a higher rate, which in the end results in greater cost to the resident that we're, we're trying to avoid in the first place by having this residential rate discussion. So, you know, I think that, and I agree with the author of the bill, we need to find that middle ground, because the intent is for us to have a residential rate that's a lifeline rate to the consumer, so that they're able to have a, a basic and a decent standard of living in whatever, wherever they call home or wherever their dwelling is. But if we require the apartment owner to rewire the place, we might as well just keep the rate the same, because their rents are going to have to go up to offset the cost of implementing the system. So, I, I would like to implore the, the GPA representatives for us to try and find this middle ground somewhere. I mean, should we have an R3-zone classification for, for commercial residential properties that have a lower rate? That was something that I was exploring when I, after we heard from these Realtors as well and the Realtors Association. But the bottom line is that we cannot be having a residential rate that favors people who lives in houses, but, but penalizes people who live in apartments or in condominiums. And if, and if it has to do with the, the wiring and the structuring of the building, we need to, as policymakers, try and figure out how we can be fair to everybody. So, I'm, I'm very open to what you guys have to suggest in, in that line, because I think that's the direction that we all should be taking. I, I don't, I don't like the idea of, yes, we'll do it, but only if we do that. We need to be fair to all of our residential rate payers.
I, I guess, Senator, at the end of the day, we, we still have to, we are in an industry, and the industry operates in a certain way, and it's always operated that way, and, and it operates that way for a reason. You have to be accurate in what you bill. Let me give you another example. There are buildings on this island, for example, that started out, as you said, as a fourplex apartment building, a sixplex apartment building, three on the bottom, three on the top, and all of a sudden, they widened the road on Route 10. And people looked and said, hey, you know, I could put a little office building, or I can run a little store in the bottom of that. And, and people started converting their apartments on the first floor to commercial usage. So, I mean, there are all these kind of things that come up. If it's accurately billed, we don't have a problem. And how building owners treat their buildings, two things first off I want to make, is, one, you're right, there is an initial cost to convert over to rewire, but that's a cost that is spread over many, many years. That's not a, that's a one-time cost. That doesn't come back every year. Then you get the residential rate. It's a one-time cost. Building owners make decisions for various reasons, and, and I can't, I don't question them, I just verified with Chris Felix, that the Tropicana, the old Tropicana Hotel next to Fiesta Hotel, that is now an apartment complex. They stayed with a master meter and they put in sub-meters, and they just bill their tenants the way that works. That's, that's the option of the customer. We don't, we try not to tell the customer what to do. The customer decides how he wants to conduct his business. According to Chris, that is not a condo, that's an apartment building. It's an apartment building, and the apartment owner decided that's the way he's going to do it. We have older, we have older buildings on Guam, like I said, that are four-unit apartments, six-unit apartments, where they had only one meter. Most of them still only have one water meter, but some of them were separately metered for power, some of them weren't. And when you have the, the thing that comes in and says, okay, the guy on the bottom is now commercial, you know, causes all sorts of problems. Let me give you a good example. Most of them have one water meter, and then somebody puts in a little store and decides to put a water, you know, sell water, for example, with those machines that, you know, clean your water or whatever, bottled water. You've seen those? And what happens is, the sewage on that meter is triggered to consumption. And now, everybody else in that unit turns around and says, wait, 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 I'm not, I'm not flushing my toilet that much. That water's not going down the, I, I'm, I want a lower rate. And we, we say to them, then you have to separate out the meters, so that we can account for these things. And that, that's why we try not to get involved in those decisions of the building owners, you know? Otherwise, we'll be trying to get involved between different people who are doing different things. So, the concept of utilities, that meter, okay? Utilities like electric utilities, water utilities, is one meter, one customer, one bill, so that the customer can be assured that when he says, show me my usage for the past 12 years, we can. See, this is how you're using it. I, I know, for example, my sister has a 15-unit apartment building up here in Monong. It's separately, separately metered for her each unit and her common area. And she came to me one day and she said, what are you doing? Look at my bill. It went from $50 a month to $400. What are you doing, Joey? And I said, well, let me look at your bill. And I looked and I saw, wow, the consumption really went up. I said to her, sis, can we go up to your building together and let's look at it? And when we went up there, we found out that several of her tenants had been disconnected by GPA for failure to pay their bill, and they ran those extension cords right out into the common area plugs on the outside and were running the refrigerator and everything. I said, this is theft of service. This is how we know there's theft of service, because you came in and said, what's going on with my bill? What did you do to me? I'm your sister. And so, she went to her tenants and said, you get out, you know, you have to pay the power. You can't run extension cords out into the hallway and plug them in and plug in your refrigerator, your TV, or whatever. The concept is very simple. It's one, one owner, one meter, one bill. This is not something we came up with. This is not, this is not something that GPA says, no, this is, this is our thought. No, this is the way the industry works.
So, on the example for that, that theft of service, who resolved that?
She did.
Yeah, she did. Because that, that was on her side.
Yes.
GPA didn't have to resolve that.
No, well, GPA disconnected that, that tenant from receiving power, that's what I'm saying.
But when it came to the theft of the service, it was, it was her that had to resolve it. And so, what I'm looking at, what I'm just listening here is, you know, we have these apartment buildings that are sub-metered, the sub-meters are owned by the owner of the building, and then they have a master meter with GPA that GPA charges to them.
Yeah.
And you're saying that your concern is, what if the sub-meter is off to the master meter? But that dispute would need to be resolved between the property owner and the, and the resident. And so, if GPA is just charging the residential rate, and the, and the resident goes to the owner of the, of the complex and says, why is my, just like your sister, why is my thing skyrocketing, and it turns out someone's stealing someone else's power, GPA is not going to have to be the one to resolve that, it's going to have to be the, the homeowners association or whoever owns the building. So, I'm just, no, one second. So, what I'm trying to reconcile here is, why can't we just assess the residential rate on those master meters that have sub-meters, for example?
There, there are several reasons. First off, we don't know what those meters are doing. We don't control.
But that would, that dispute would have to be resolved between the resident and the homeowners association, not GPA.
Could, could, could I take this a step further? Supposing you got to a building where the homeowners decided, hey, I want a separate bill. I want a separate bill because I am getting paid by my company, from, I, I get an allowance for my living, partners, National Guard, and I'm allowed to also deduct what I paid for the power bill. But I have to get a separate power bill.
That would be between the homeowners association or the building owner and the resident?
No, no, no. What I mean is, they want a separate power bill so they can show that they're paying a separate power bill to GPA.
And that would be between the resident and the homeowner, so GPA wouldn't have to, all of a sudden, provide that bill?
No, I'm saying, what happens if they want a bill? What happens if they say, it's a requirement of my service and getting my housing allowance and my utility cost allowance, I need a bill to show them that this is what I'm paying.
Then the building owner would...
Huh?
Or the building owner would provide that.
Okay, Senator, I'm just trying to tell you, I go, it, it all goes back again to the industry practice and industry standard and the principles of the industry that go back to one meter, one customer, one bill. It, it, it keeps everybody honest. It keeps us honest. And, pardon? You know, I mean, it, this, we, we want to work with them. We want to work with them. Uh, maybe their, 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 their wiring can be easily accomplished. And, you know, I don't know. We just want to work with them. Certain people, like I said, have done different things. Ladera Towers went from a master meter, and they came in and they rewired their building and said, "Start putting in residential." We did. And then they came to us, and they said, "Take it out, because we just want to do the master meter." We said, "Okay." It, it just, uh, you know, I'm just trying to tell you, we want to work with people, but there are certain things that, that, certain principles that you just have to adhere to.
Okay. Mr. Haran?
Yes, again, thank you. Actually, you know, Commissioner Sanchez, Commissioner Duenas and myself, we all serve with the P U C. And actually, a lot of these, you know, we at the CCU set policies on how Guam Power was run, is run. But as far as these, uh, rate settings for charging customers, actually, the P U C is the one that sets the definition of Schedule J, Schedule R, or all the various schedules. They are the ones that, because the, they're, they're the rate setters. We CCU don't set rates. We just, you know, work with management and facilitate how they operate and, and run the power. But all, uh, rate setting is done really by the P U C. And I think P U C needs to be involved in this. And together, by the way, we definitely are willing to work with everybody to, you know, to resolve this. However, again, the, the bottom line is, you know, in order to be totally accurate and fair, the one-meter concept would almost have to, to continue to exist. So, but we're willing to sit down with everybody.
Well, this bill is not proposing to set the rate. It's just saying, "Don't charge a residential customer a commercial rate." And let me, let me invite up Mr. Ryan De Guzman. And we just have about five more minutes, because we go into session at 11:00. So I ask you to present your testimony at this time. Yes, please, and just state your, your full name and who you represent and your position on the bill.
Good morning, Senators. My name is Ryan De Guzman. I'm the incoming president from the Guam Association of Realtors. And I'm just here to, to testify that we are in support of the bill. It's not fair for residents to be charged a commercial rate, and so we'd like for that to happen. Um, I understand there's some challenges regarding that, but simply said, we would like to see residents charge a residential rate.
Okay. And for the record, we have received a written testimony, also in support of this bill, from the president of Villa Kontentasi Homeowners Association, Dar Johnson, and also Mr. Victorio Rages and Ms. Conchita Rages, also in support of the... I'll ask the sponsor to close. And then, just so you know, Senator Tom Adam wants to keep the record open till at least October 31st for any additional written testimony. And I'm sure he would call a follow-up markup meeting, so we can continue, as the sponsor pointed out, continue to work with GPA and others involved as we move forward together. So, Senator Rodriguez?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you very much to our CCU members. And, and really, just to make something clear, you know, when Mr. Duenas, you said this came out of nowhere. This is a 13-year-old problem that existed from a very long time.
I meant the bill, Senator.
No, the bill. Yeah, so that's why. The bill came up from a 13-year-old problem that was brought to us, our attention, really, two months ago. I know that they were working with our late speaker, Ben Panglin, as well, on this, and we had some, some documents to show that. But really, and, and Mr. Haran, you said that, and you're correct, that you don't establish the rate, you, it's the P U C, that, that approves the, sets the rates. And so what this bill does now is require GPA to develop and establish a rate schedule for these homeowners who are in condominiums and apartments to pay residential rates. And so I know, you know, we can go back and forth, all we want today, it's not gonna resolve it today. But really, this, this, this legislation is gonna be the vehicle. And, you know, we're gonna make it the vehicle to resolve this, because it, it hasn't been really resolved. You know, I know you said, "We'll sit down, we'll, we'll, we'll discuss." And so we'll do that. But I think this has to be the framework of, of, of those discussions. You know, the, the concept or the industry standard of one meter, one customer, one billing, I, I don't, I don't question that at all. And so we're not saying to change that. We're saying that, yes, you have a, you have a master meter, continue to do that. And all we're saying is that these units who are used as residential units must be billed that residential rate. And so, you know, the question about whether, what if that unit owner has a question about it? I'm sure it happens today. I remember running a commercial business before, and I was in a building. And, and there was a, there was a master meter, a sub-meter. My unit was, was under a sub-meter. And I questioned my landlord and say, "Why is it this month I have, you know, I paid this much, and the next month I paid this?" So that's between me and the landlord. I've never went to GPA and said, "Look, I've, I'm paying too much or paying, you know, too little." So that's always gonna occur. And all we're saying is that we gotta be equitable across the board. If it's a residential, use it as a residential. If it's commercial, build them as, as commercial. And so we'll, we'll, we'll continue to work with, with, with you and GPA and, and try to make this thing, resolve this 13-year-old problem. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And again, on behalf of Senator Tom Adam, thank you all for your participation. We're, you okay? We are adjourned.